Sorry, I didn't give you more notice. Sorry about that. We're not to run that. It's nine o'clock. We will call the meeting of the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners to order. We'll be following the Open Meetings Act as amended, a copy of which is posted at the entry of the room. We'll be meeting at 9:15 or shortly after, as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization again following the Open Meetings Act as amended. First order of business is to open with prayer. Mr. Williams, please.
Please join me. Heavenly Father, as we gather today, give us some guidance and solid deliberation to make the sound decisions that are pleasing to you. We ask for your protection over our staff, our many public servants, whether they be in fire and rescue, law enforcement, or this building and others. Be with us as we make our decisions and hopefully the best of those to please you and serve the public interest. Protect our law enforcement, our military, both here and abroad, in this tumultuous world that we live in, Lord. Be with them, protect them, as they do their duty to protect our freedom. These things we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Entertain a motion to approve the minutes regarding the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners meeting held on January 22nd, 2024. There are any amendments to that?
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the minutes regarding the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners meeting held on January 22nd, 2024.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any corrections or discussion? Roll call, please.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Bruns.
Aye.
Mueller.
Ah, Weems.
Epstein.
Hubley.
Aye.
Next item is claims and treasures receipts.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the claims and treasures receipts as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Discussion. Call, please.
Mueller.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Bruns.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Hubley.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is to receive an order filed fee report submitted by the county sheriff.
To accept an order filed, the fee report submitted by the county sheriff, from the amount of $5,832.65.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Bruns.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Hubley.
Aye.
with the Village of Farnham Emergency Medical Services.
This is the final part, getting the Farnham EMS interlocal where it was supposed to be originally. This simply has now swapped out Rural Fire Protection District for the Village EMS who owns and operates the ambulance. So this is the same agreement you signed last year, it just has the right entity in it, and one less year on it.
We have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we enter local ambulance agreement with the Village of Farnham Emergency Medical Services for those services.
Second.
Discussion. Call vote.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Bruns.
Aye.
Hubley.
Aye.
Fine, how are you guys doing?
Good.
I would like to sign two.
I need your autograph.
I'm not putting my name on that.
One may argue that's actually your specialty.
If we're being liberal, yes.
Certain areas where there's pain.
In the pocketbook.
That's maybe dope.
In the pocketbook.
Yeah.
Jason, I'd like to ask the patient what she did.
Jason, I drove out and looked at the bridge last night, making significant progress, particularly on the north side now with the approach.
Yeah. Yeah, they're making progress, isn't it?
Yeah.
It's really good.
Just pleased to see that. The River Road could stand a maintainer to go over it, though.
That's supposed to be five, right?
This is a three.
Got a 24 here, a 23 there. Want to rewrite it.
She's got a whole bunch of them correct.
She probably added a coin in there.
It's interesting, if you've noticed, amounts on those different application for fees. That's a lot more. It was kind of interesting, a little bit of difference between the attorneys.
Good morning, Julie.
As far as what?
The amount. That one's $237, the other were all a hundred, and that one was a hundred and a quarter.
It's because that's the hourly amount totaled up at $125 per hour prorated to the amount that they have, and if they have additional expenses, it goes here, and then you add two.
I understand that, but it looked like it was the same thing. I'm surprised that it was just that many per hour. That's all I can say. Now the others have been an hour. Probably a steeper case, but it just was interesting noting that. This one's $375. Some people work more efficiently than others. Different cases take different amounts of time.
The atomic clock there.
No.
Yeah, mine too.
Who's that guy sitting over there?
Good morning, Sheriff. You must have tiptoed in.
I did. I'm worried.
This is the first time I've seen the name left on it. Usually, it's interesting, same two people, I think, Audrey, and the same thing. It just looks funny appearing in the... unless that was an old form, maybe she grabbed two. 9:15, we will recess as Lincoln County Board of Commissioners and convene as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization again following the Open Meetings Act as amended, posted at the entry of the room. The first item is to approve the minutes regarding the Lincoln County Board of Equalization meeting held on January 22nd, 2024. I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes regarding the Lincoln County Board of Equalization meeting held on January 22nd, 2024.
Second. A motion and a second. Any discussion? Call, please.
Mueller.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Weems.
Epstein.
Hubley.
Aye.
Next item, certificates of correction and refund is submitted by the county assessor.
Assessor, what you will have in front of you this morning will be an acceleration of the 2024 personal property taxes for the business of Posapalusa. It's sold, and after the first of the year, sold in January.
Okay, it appears that acceleration of taxes, the amount of $222.02 for a business sold, and they entertain a motion to authorize the chairman to sign the same.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we approve, and you sign the correction and refund that's submitted by the county assessor.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Bruns.
Aye.
Hubley.
Aye.
Next item is the waiver of correction and refund is submitted, or certificates of correction and refund is submitted by the county assessor. Favor for late filing permissive exemption application, Form 450 non unreal property. Julie.
Yes. This year is the year for the 451 exemption forms to be filed by permissive exemption entities. December 31st is the filing deadline. If they miss that December 31st filing deadline, in order for me to consider this application to be filed as a late application, they must submit a letter to you explaining good cause on why they were late filing. They have until June 30th to do that late filing letter in front of you guys for me to approve it. There is a $100 filing penalty for each month that they are late up until that June 30th deadline, or 10% of the taxes due, which almost always is that $100, is the lesser of the two amounts. So if you would read through the letter, they have a pretty good explanation here. It's the Lincoln County, oops, excuse me, North Pla- Opportunity Center. They file permissive exemptions on many properties, but this is a property they just acquired and purchased, closed on December 28th. So really, they didn't actually have much time to file this by the December 31st deadline. So they did get it filed, and if you guys accept their reason why it wasn't filed by December 31st, that will give me the ability to go in and approve or disapprove of the application. And they are aware, if it is approved, that there still will be that $100 penalty for the late filing.
That penalty applies even though, even if we approve this?
Yes, no.
We have a motion for discussion?
I would move to approve waiver for late filing of permission, permissive exemption application, Form 451 on real property, that's now owned by North Pla- Opportunity Center.
Motion?
Second.
Discussion, further discussion.
Julie, we're going to take this down to, from $175,000 to zero.
If I, you know, decide that they qualify, and you know, the information that they provided on the actual application, I'm going to say probably yes. Like I said, I haven't.
Probably, but you have time to review.
Yeah, I still have. I think we have clear up until June 30th. We usually try to get into you guys in February, but, and then you guys will have to rule on every single one of these, or I think, not sure, we'll have to talk to Tyler. I think we did big motions last year and stuff, for the last four years. But yeah, they will, these applications will all come in front of you this year, since they are the long form, the 451. Once every four years, or the years divisible by four, they will come back in front of you after I get my determinations made on all of them.
Further discussion? Roll call.
Weems.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Bruns.
Aye.
Hubley.
Aye.
Anything further to come before the Board of Equalization? During that, we'll adjourn at 9:21 and reconvene as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners. You know, because that's only the single one. I wonder if they just have a bunch of forms, I assume, because when it's still on, we have that one. Maybe it's in our word processor, but it seems funny that that comes out like that, doesn't it? Seems like they would be consistent.
It's not numbered, but it's going to be 52, so between 50 and 53.
You didn't do very good, did you?
I don't know if I've ever seen a sheriff with short hair.
I'm going to make it 52.
I don't think I have. It's all the time I've known him. Something's different. Save that for the summertime. Save that for the summertime.
Do we have cars for that now?
I think sometimes both cars are in use. That'd be a good question for Julie.
She walked out too fast. I didn't see it till she walked out.
Do you want me to set it aside?
Well, you can ask her later, I can ask her later.
I've asked previously, and that's what the response was on that.
If they're using it, I get them. If Henry's out doing something.
Yeah.
9:25, our next item is to discuss and consider possible action or actions against the California Air Resources Board in response to the Advanced Clean Fleets Regulation. Mr. Voltnor, would you lead us in that discussion? And I'm not sure, were you here, Kent, when we talked about this before?
I don't think so, but I did see the memo.
Okay, thank you. So please.
This is an item that I've talked to a number of you about, not going to reinvent the wheel, this is kind of boring. Obviously, California's passed some regulations that may or may not affect some downstream entities. Someday, we would be one of those, one of hundreds and hundreds. Normally, I would start looking for possible legal actions on my own, but since I've talked to the board about it, and since this is not necessarily within the state of Nebraska, I thought I'd get some formal board permission instead of just asking for forgiveness once. So that's all, might result in nothing, might result in some feel-good resolution condemning it, I don't know.
Kent?
Thank you. Ready for a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that this board authorize potential actions to include potential litigation against the California Air Resources Board in response to the Advanced Clean Fleets Regulation, which would have great potential to do harm to Lincoln County.
Second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
And pursue, I would add to my, to my motion, friendly amendment, and pursue potential partnerships with other legal entities to assist us in that.
I approve that memo. Second. So in order, we have that amendment. Discussion? During that, roll call vote, please.
Brans.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Uller. Hi. Keewee.
Hi.
I'll let you know if I come up with something besides shouting into the wind.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Tyler. Feeling I missed Brandon's refresher on CPR, didn't I, a couple weeks ago?
It was a good one.
I'm curious why they're not using that vehicle. I'm sure I did, I've seen one out there. His...
Henry uses the green one. Alston who's using the blue one. That seems...
I think you have some guys over there that do good stick figure work. They could freehand it.
Half of November and all of December. It's 9:30. Next item is to quarterly report by Brandon Myers, Region 51 Emergency Management Director. Mr. Myers, please. Morning. You know the routine?
Brandon Myers, Director of Region 51 Emergency Management.
Morning, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Quarterly Report.
Thank you.
Let's see. Fiscal year 2023 MPG grant has been approved and will receive a total of $60,501.94. We submitted the first quarter reimbursement request in November and received $20,764.85. $1,520.45 went to Dundee County. $1,430.79 went to Hitchcock County for their share in the salaries. We have submitted second quarter reimbursement for $21,153.79. $1,622.14 will go to Dundee County, and $1,526.43 go to Hitchcock County for their share in the salaries. We submitted six 2021 HMGG SHSP grant reimbursements totaling $23,009.39, and 10 2022 HMGG SHSP grant reimbursements totaling $80,791.75 this quarter. The 2023 HMGG SHSP grant funds have been approved at $279,160. We sent quarterly invoices to Dundee and Hitchcock Counties for their quarter of the approved budget for each county. This will be $8,214.75 from Dundee County and $7,064.75 from Hitchcock County. All three counties hazard mitigation plans are up to date. We are beginning the BRIC application process for the Dundee County HMP. I represent Lincoln County for the Los Canyons, CWPP, and Dundee and Hitchcock Counties and the Southwest CWPP. All of those plans are up to date. All three counties are currently in their LEOPS. Contact updates are currently being worked on the bold planning software. New hazmat plan section of the Lincoln County LEOP is up to date. Quarterly report due to NEMA has been completed and submitted on time. This last quarter, I showed the command unit to the North Platte Airport Authority personnel and Lincoln County Commissioners. Pam communicated and planned with the Dundee County Attorney regarding emergency roads and communicated with Vince about EMA mutual aid with Yuma County, Colorado. During this last quarter, I attended the NEMA IPPW, which is the Integrated Preparedness Planning Workshop. Joanna attended the Nebraska Public Power District and the Central Nebraska Public Power Agitation District Emergency Action Plan Review Meeting and two Lincoln County CERT Team meetings. Joanna also worked with NEMA and the Dundee County Clerk and Treasurer to get them set up in FEMA GO. All staff attended the NPA Pipeline Safety Program Training Tabletop Exercise. Myself and Joanna attended the EPA Five Rivers Rapid Assessment Exercise with CERT members, and the initial planning meeting for an upcoming US Army North exercise. Joanna attended the final planning meeting for the EPA Subarea Five Rivers Rapid Assessment Exercise. Myself and Joanna attended Five Rivers Rapid Assessment Survey, 123, training with our CERT volunteers. Myself, Kyle and Pam attended a WebEOC training. I attended the IAM Conference and a Curtis Volunteer Fire Department Tallgrass Training. Joanna attended Winter Storm Spotter and a Newspaper Self-Service Public Notice Training. Myself, Kyle and Pam taught CERT basic training in Dundee County, where Pam also attended this training. I taught traffic incident management classes for fighters, law enforcement, and others in four different classes. Pam attended a PTSD training workshop. Kyle attended a sound manner credential training. I instructed AED to the Masonic Lodge and taught CPR to police department and dispatch employees. Pam taught CPR BLS to Dundee County Hospital and Dundee County EMS ambulance personnel. During this last quarter, I attended a city council meeting to help recognize North Platte City Transit at a city council meeting for the assistance during the Sutherland Care Facility fire. Did an interview with KNOP about emergency kits, spoke with the area of agency, or area agency on aging about Smart 91, and participated in the Christmas Parade. Joanna attended a Tourism Advisory Council Meeting, discussed winter IED closures, presented preparedness information to Boy Scouts Weebos Pack, and attended a Civil Patrol, Civil Air Patrol Award Ceremony, where our intern received an award, which was the Billy Mitchell Award, kind of a prestigious one. Pam assisted EMS with standby at a football game. Kyle participated in Trenton Volunteer Fire Department Pancake Feed Razor. During this last quarter, we monitored weather daily. There were several severe winter storms for all three counties this quarter, as well as a minor fire along IED. Myself and Joanna attended an AAR hot wash for the Sutherland Care Facility. I attended a stakeholder meeting, work session with Commissioners concerning the UP railroad railcar explosion. Myself and Joanna also worked the IED closure during a blizzard event. Pam handled a truck train accident at a crossing and a motor vehicle accident hazmat spill. Staff attended one Lee Bird Field, six Goodland Weather webinars. We also attended the National Weather Service Annual Winter Partner webinar and the National Water Prediction Service website change webinar. We're continuing our, working on getting our mobile command center set up and functional. We have also been working with NEMA and FEMA on declared disaster DR-4521 for the COVID-19 response. CAT-Z administrative costs for the city of North Platte, Lincoln County have been submitted, and document requests were fulfilled. We're just currently waiting for documents to be processed and for payment to be approved. During the last quarter, our staff attended one South Central PET Region Meeting, one Lincoln County LEPC, two Southwest PET Region Meetings, two Southwest LEPC, three Nebraska Association Emergency Management Board Meetings, three Nebraska Regional Interoperable Network Board Meetings, one Nebraska Regional Interoperable Network Technical Meeting, three Nebraska Public Healthcare Coalition South Central Meetings, two Link Up Meetings, one West Central TIM Meeting, one Nebraska Citizen Corps Meeting, two Nebraska Citizen Corps Council Meetings, or Executive Meetings, one Southeast PET Region Workshop, one Region Two Meeting, one Lincoln County Tallgrass Update, one NEMA State Training Meeting, NACO Conference, Dundee County SO, one Southwest Nebraska Juvenile Services, one Frenchman Valley Mutual Aid Association, three Lincoln County Commissioner Meetings, three Dundee County Commissioner Meetings, one Hitchcock County Commissioner Meeting. Pam assisted numerous Dundee County EMS calls. Kyle attended two Coburnson EMS Meetings, three Coburnson Fire Meetings, and continued EMT refresher training. Our upcoming events, first aid CPR presentations to Weebos Pack, Lincoln County Employees CPR Training, US Army North Exercise, our Nebraska Associated Emergency Management Conference, so great weather awareness week, and the poster contest. CERT trainings, continuing with our outreach for local agencies, planning, setting up other exercises, and of course, continuing our training.
Busy? Busy. May I have a question for you, Brandon?
Yes, sir.
US Army North Exercise, what is that?
That is an exercise with, US Army North is a training division for the 72nd Civil Support Team in Nebraska. So that's going to encompass hazmat, biological, nuclear type testing, training for that team to incorporate with our local resources.
Where are they out of?
What's that?
Where are they out of?
US Army North, they are out of Texas, and 72nd Civil Support is out of Lincoln. So they'll just, they'll help test our hazmat team for the fire department, some, possibly some investigative stuff with our law enforcement, things like that, two different scenarios that we'll, we'll have.
Questions? Brandon, in regards to the pipeline safety trainings, is any of that looking ahead at CO2 pipeline transmissions?
The one I went down to Curtis was. That was their kind of initial training, kind of feeling out how they want to, want to present this to the area units that will end up responding to something if it should happen along the pipeline. So the initial, again, because we've got the Tallgrass Plant right there off Highway 83, which falls into Maywood and Wellfleet Fire District, Curtis is part of that area that would assist, so they just kind of want to get those volunteers first.
On that note, I had a good conversation with Tallgrass this last week, and they were expressing interest in meeting with our volunteer fire departments for continued training.
Yes.
On pipelines, so I pointed them, obviously, in your direction. They said they had a good working relationship with you.
Yes, they do.
Is that a major concern of yours, of CO2 transfer?
Not really. The biggest thing with the CO2 transfer is if the pipe should rupture for some reason, again, anybody that gets within that, that area, that cloudy area, it disperses all oxygen. So as in other hazardous, this is kind of one of the least ones to really worry about.
Yeah, the natural gas that they operate is probably a little bit more...
Yes.
Touchy.
Anything else for Brandon? Brandon, appreciate your work. Thank you, my friend.
Thank you.
Next item, 9:40, discuss and consider proposals for the Lincoln County Audit sending June 30, 2024, 2025. I think it's supposed to be 2025 and 2026.
Oh, yeah. I'm 2045.
I about read what it said. Becky, I think we'd ask you to maybe follow up and do a little...
Yeah, I'm going to ask Alex to come up too.
Oh, sure.
We've been kind of...
Please.
Okay, to answer some of the questions from last week.
Just, just for the record while we have her, let's go ahead and identify yourself.
Alex, could you, Lincoln County Treasurer?
Thank you.
Okay, I contacted RCM and spoke to Jill Clay. They do not have any offices in Nebraska, Wichita, Kansas would be their closest office. It was correct, there is no out-of-pocket, which is kind of unusual, but she has family in Nebraska, and she just felt that she would come this way, and there would be no out-of-pocket expenses in the contract, unless there's something unusual that comes up in the audit that would require extra onsite activity. March 31st is when the single audit has to be filed. That is kind of the drop dead date that was in there. I included a thing in your packets from a question I had asked Rachel at the State Auditor's Office. We actually have eight major programs that could be included in the single audit. Normally, as Rachel indicated, it's kind of a various, kind of depends on what they pick. Sometimes we have one, sometimes we have two. RCM indicated it could be up to three, but more than likely, I just, in my figures I did down here, I figured two major programs. I don't know that we've ever had three, but we might have. Alex and I both talked to York County. I'll let Alex say what she found from her treasure and...
Yeah, so I talked to York County. I had asked to just see their audit from RCM. I didn't mind it, I kind of liked, I mean, same spiel, most audit reports are the same layout anyway, nothing really different in that. Kind of went through how they do their work. Most of it is offsite scanning in. I prefer that too, less hands on, less people here. They do some onsite stuff. Obviously you have to, I understand that. I did point out to both R C M and Dana Cole that you'd be in my vault, so that kind of helps with Becky's schedule a little bit. That takes, especially electioneers, takes a lot of pressure off of them being in their vault and in their way. They're in my vault, so we can do a little bit more. Speaking with both of them, I had kind of, so Mitchell from Dana Cole, I'd said if we decide you on Monday, give me a date that you could be here. So we kind of talked about that. He was able to throw out a couple of dates. When I talked to Jill at R C M, she's like, well, we don't really have a schedule right now. And I said, that's fine too, whatever works. I personally don't have an opinion between the two. I like both of their work. I had talked to other counties who have both of them. They seem to be pleased with all of it. I will say I am leaning a little bit towards Dana Cole just because they have done more county audits with federal audits and we do have to have a federal audit. That would be my only reason to lean towards them. They just have a little more experience than R C M, but I'm not going to discount R C M at all. That's just my opinion, but I really don't mind either one of them. And I've kind of relayed that to Becky too. Just figured we kind of work with both of our schedules and basically figure as we go because we're not the only county getting an auditor this year, so.
And I spoke to the York County Clerk. They really have enjoyed working with us, Jill Clay at R C M. She did tell me their audit, they did not get it till March last year. That was the first year they'd had a single audit. So that probably had something to do with that timeframe. She also did tell me though, that four other counties had contacted her that were looking at R C M to do theirs. So are they going to take on more than one county? Probably, so.
I appreciate you consolidating the numbers to give us a clear, as best we can, apples to apples. This is kind of what I was thinking. I'm glad to see that there was the no out of pocket expenses unless obviously something.
Yeah, that was just kind of, yeah, it's unusual not to have those, but that's what she told me.
And hearing from the county treasurer that really, I mean, yes, she may have a slight preference just due to the experience with federal audits, but ultimately the people that you've talked to seem pleased with the outcomes of both companies. My personal opinion is to go with the lesser value or the lesser cost if we're getting about the same value in the output, the deliverable to us, which is, looking at these numbers, pretty significant. In year three, almost $20,000 cheaper with R C M, so.
I agree, Commissioner Brunz, with, after hearing the feedback where there's not a lot of difference in the service provided, the savings with going with R C M is substantial. And is this a contract that we can review every year? It's a three year.
You really don't want to change auditors every year unless you absolutely have to. It's going to take them three years to kind of get in the flow of how we do things, what we call.
And the first year is definitely going to be the highest. That's all your initial work, that's, I mean, coming in fresh. They don't know us, we don't know them. Gets easier every year when they know what to expect, we know what to expect.
And three years isn't a long term where if we're not satisfied with the performance, then we can review it again in three years.
Don't know if we're going to have many options though. There's slim pickings as it is and with the state not taking on anyone, it's dwindling in options and pushed back the timeframe that we can have onsite or even a report.
Okay. Yeah, it's going to be the same with whatever company you go with, unfortunately. They're just.
Alex, did I hear you say that York County has had a federal audit done?
That was last year.
Last year.
According to my treasurer, that was their first federal audit.
By R C M?
By R C M. They had their field work done in September, but since it was the first single audit, then that, their audit report got pushed back to March because they did not anticipate that.
And they were pleased with R C M?
Yes. My, I want to say my treasurer, treasurer in York, my friend, she's only been there for one year. So she said she didn't have a lot of experience with the audit as the treasurer, just as a clerk. That's why Becky had reached out to their clerk to get a little more insight.
Your experience, your background, which was obviously one of the key reasons why way back when we selected you for the position you're in with the audits, you really think that both of these companies are good companies and looking at the deliverables that you've been privy to?
I mean, based on my experience, I did more field work than actually make the audit report, right? Because I was a staff accountant, I wasn't a C P A. There was some input on my findings for the audit report, but they're based, they're all the same. It's the same structure for every audit report you issue, no matter what industry you're in. So what I was kind of looking for was what timeframe the field work would be onsite and offsite and when our audit report would be issued. I think it's going to be the same date, no matter who we choose, just because everyone's taking on more. I don't necessarily like the March 31st deadline because we've already gone through nine months of mistakes, quote unquote, that will get on the next audit report that we're like, oh, we didn't even know we were making that. But I don't think that's going to get any better with anybody. But when I was talking to Dana Cole, they said that they would try mid-January, latest mid-February. Same thing. It's not, it's not a significant, I mean, it's not six months before, right? So six in one and half dozen in the other.
And if we're able to solidify, we can get on the calendar with whatever firm that we pick and get things scheduled sooner, so.
I do think we need to pick sooner than later though, because there are so many other counties reaching out. And like Becky said, R C M already got four other offers and they're going to take them on. So the faster we get in, the faster we can have our on-field work, which is better for us.
Okay, ladies, I appreciate your research. Having heard that, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would move, and I suppose we'll have a discussion and see how it shakes out, but I would move that we accept the proposal for the Lincoln County Audits ending June 30th of 2024, 2025 and 2026, so for the next three-year period from R C M.
Second. Motion is second. Any further discussion or questions?
Becky and Alex, thank you for all the work you did. You brought back answers to every question we asked you last week and then some. So I feel like, I feel like R C M is the better choice for us.
The history of R C M. Hold up a company, are we talking about? Is anybody else?
I do not know about R C M. Jill Clay, who will be our auditor, she was with Countrymen and Associates for about 15 years in Nebraska. Her husband's job took them to Kansas. That's why she went that direction and joined this firm. I do not know much about the York Car in Monroe. They, basically, she told me that Countrymen's did not do, accept any more audit proposals. So it was just an agreement between Countrymen's and her when she left, that she took York County with her because they had nobody else to do it. And then she would not pursue the counties that they already did, their clients. So she is licensed in both Kansas and Nebraska, but she was with Countrymen, who's a well-known entity for here in Nebraska.
The questions? Roll call vote, please.
Brunz?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Hubley?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you for digging into that, of course. Next item, discuss, consider an agreement with Prodigy Solutions for inmate communication services and commissary services, trust accounting software for the Lincoln County Detention Center. Good morning, Sheriff.
Good morning, Jerome Kramer, Lincoln County Sheriff. Here to discuss our contract with Prodigy. From what I'm gathering from this, FCC rates have changed, so we got a new payment schedule to meet FCC mandated requirements. Which, in summary, is it, it helped the county because our commission went from 58% to now be 63% on all phone calls. And, but that mandated rate has dropped with the inmates pay from 25 cents to 21 cents. So we gained 5% and lost 4 cents a minute, which is still good for Lincoln County. It doesn't matter who you go with, FCC rates are what they are. So it also took us from, for like the video phone calls, it took us from 10% to 30%. So I think we'll see an increase in our part of the revenue at the end of the day. So just here to ask for the, your blessing and your signature and get this sent back to them. It's a five-year contract.
Like that?
So, yeah. And they do a good job. They also handle our commissary, but it's not affected by this. And part of the reason they were able to raise that percentage was because we've had a three-year contract and their, and their equipment is paid for now. So they were able to increase our commission, so.
Like that too.
Yeah, so, and they do a good job keeping the equipment up and running and they're a good company. We like them.
Just for baseline, what is the revenue to the county on a monthly basis from Prodigy, roughly?
Do you know what those, Williams, come on here.
Decisive amount, is it not?
I would like to say it's around.
See Penny moving around the hall?
These numbers all went up from your last contract though, right? As far as, the numbers all got better for us versus the last agreement.
Except the rate per minute.
Rate per minute.
Yeah.
But the percentage got better for us.
5% and some 20%, yeah. But seeing some legislation come through where they're attacking that phone, charging anything for phone calls, which.
There's a lot of legislation attacking a lot of county funding right now.
Yeah, and it's, it's too bad because, I mean, somebody has to pay for this.
But it is a service.
It's a service that they don't have to pay for. They have the choice. And I believe jail standards requires us to give them one phone call a week. So this is all above and beyond at their choice, so.
Yeah.
December, jail telephone commission was approximately close to 17,000.
Might be a little bit higher in December than it is.
Because of holiday.
Other months, but I got to believe, I've got to believe that it's actually pretty close because we calculated, we calculated all these numbers about three, four months ago.
Yeah, you also have to remember in December, our jail population was down to about 120 and we're usually around 140 to 160-ish.
Good point.
We're at 84,000 so far for that six months.
We need any extra incentive inmates oftentimes will make phone and video calls and then continue to incriminate themselves in crimes for which they are currently incarcerated or we didn't even know about yet.
Yes, I'm well aware of the information that's gleaned by those recorded calls.
Okay, appreciate that information, Sheriff. I am, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the agreement with Prodigy Solutions for inmate communication services and commissary services, trust accounting software for the Lincoln County Detention Center and authorize your signature.
Second.
The motion is second, any further discussion? Roll call, please, Tammy.
Williams?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye.
Brunz?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Hubley?
Can you sign that down?
Yeah. I just can't email anyone. Anybody besides you? There's Dan, Negan, Dan, or Lexi, anyone? Just you?
It's 10 o'clock. The next item is to discuss, consider the Liberty Tree Program and Plaque. Becky, I think you may have received some information on this also, correct?
I think it's what was in your packet.
Okay.
There is, and some additional copies up here.
And gentleman by the name of Rich or Rick. Maybe that's, Rich?
Rick.
Please come on forward. If you would just introduce yourself and sign in, please, for the record.
All right, Rich Halls, resident in North Platte here, since the 1800s, I guess you might say. Did you get a chance to review that flyer?
We did, all had the information that you had submitted. I appreciate it.
Yeah.
I'm going to have you just briefly, maybe give us a little background here. I think it sounds like to me an interesting program, but I want my colleagues on the board to also.
Okay, well, the S A R nationally is doing this for the 250th celebration of the Constitution. And what we want to do is plant a liberty tree across country in different locations. In Nebraska, you'll have three trees. Two will be planted, one in Kimball, one in Hastings. And hopefully, we can dedicate this large tree out here because it's a representative of the original, the Liberty Tree in Boston, which was in the Commons area. And everybody met there to decide what they were going to do about the British, et cetera. That tree was 150 years old when it was dedicated originally and its storms have taken that tree down. It was a big elm tree. Now, in the state of Nebraska, if we plant a tree, we can plant one here, but we have a perfect tree in the perfect location. This is like a Commons area. This is where people come to gather and meet. And we're going to do this ceremony, wherever we do it, in conjunction with the D A R. D A R has a, September 17th, they have a celebration, as you know, right here on the courthouse. A lot that they do their Constitution Week and then they do their speeches and they go around the block and ring bells. We'll come down this year with the entire color guard and the muskets and the flags and the whole nine yards and we'll, we'll do that with them. And then they're going to be with us for our tree dedication. So what I would like to do is make this tree our liberty tree and put a plaque out there. And that could become a national event for the S A R and the D A R down the road. They're pushing real hard to combine events now to make them bigger and get more people involved. If it becomes a national event, we'll draw a lot of people from all over the country. There's a lot of people in this organization, like myself, that are retired, that that's what they do. They go to these events.
Appreciate it. When Rich got ahold of me, to me, it sounded like a tremendous opportunity, I think. We have, I think, an ideal location for it. I think it would give some recognition to Lincoln County and I think it's an excellent project, but I want to hear from the rest of you, your thoughts, please.
Rich, you're talking about a tree here on the property?
The one right there, a great big one right there.
Okay, so you're going to adopt our tree?
I want to adopt that tree in the worst way.
Does that tree?
Does that tree already have a?
No.
Dedicated plaque?
It has no marker on it.
No marker?
No marker. I checked it out.
Rich, just for the people who don't know, tell us what SAR and DAR.
Okay, the Sons of the American Revolution and the Daughters of the American Revolution. Organization's been around since about 1880. We promote history and the knowledge of history. And we're community service also, both of us.
I've been to many events where the Daughters of the American Revolution have, they do wonderful.
They do.
Events in our community.
Well, we don't have a lot of SAR members here. There's only two of us. I'm the state representative out in the western part of the state. We're gonna have a chapter one of these days. We've got about six, eight members that wanna join, so, but that's a time process thing. When we get 10, we'll have a chapter here.
Well, I think it's great that you want to adopt a tree that has been growing in our area for many years.
Right.
It is a beautiful tree.
Yeah, it's better than planting a tree, I think, yes.
I know the Daughters of the American Revolution, they're fairly active in the community. Really appreciate their work, and I look forward to seeing the Sons of the American Revolution get a chapter formed.
Right, right. It takes a little time, but we're working at it.
I'm well aware of the civic engagement and the time commitment that's associated with that, so wish you the best. I think this is a great project and.
Great.
I support it.
I do, too.
You ready for a motion?
I am. I was gonna say that sounds like that's probably the next item on the agenda, too. Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we authorize the dedication of the large tree right out here in front of the Lincoln County Courthouse, being dedicated and a commemorative plaque being placed for the Liberty Tree Program.
Second.
The motion is seconded. Any further discussion?
Rich, can you tell us what species this tree is?
I wish you wouldn't have asked me that. I thought it was an oak to start with.
We have somebody in the audience that.
And now I think it's a willow.
I haven't looked at it. I wasn't aware.
It's got the long willow leaf. I'm gonna find out today.
They're great big trees. A hackberry. You'd be happy to look at it.
This one?
One of them's a hackberry.
Is it a hackberry?
I don't know if that's the one you're talking about.
I think, well, it's the biggest one out here.
I think that's a hackberry.
Is it really?
I believe.
It's a beautiful tree.
But they're a long live tree. They're just like an oak.
Well, it's 60 feet tall, yeah. Hackberry, perfect. It'll work.
Okay, the motion is seconded. Any further discussion?
Roll call, please, Tammy.
Brens.
Aye.
Fuller.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye. Rich, thank you for contacting us. Thank you. Sounds like.
I'll let you know, as we get down here, the event, when we put it together, we'll want some speakers, and maybe somebody would like to come say something.
Sure. Where do you go on the plaque? Will you, who would you work with on that?
The state. State's providing us plaques and we'll modify it accordingly. All right, sounds good. Thank you, gentlemen.
Next item on the agenda is discuss, consider submitting fiscal notes for legislative bills. Kayla, before we mention that, I want to say a couple of things. First of all, I've only sat here a week or two, but Commissioner Woodruff wanted to know what she could do to help. She has been a tremendous, just in two weeks, help on a number of things. I know Becky, we received the request from legislature for some fiscal notes on bills, more so than we've ever gotten in the past. Maybe one, we'll get one or two occasionally, but this year we just had a number. And Becky is, as we all know, a little bit shorthanded. She's busy, and I ask if maybe Michaela would step in and help a little bit. So, ladies between you two, would you please lead this?
Yes, Chairman. I, when I went to work, Veteran Service Officer Tom Gann on the Veterans Bill, we were asked right away to submit a fiscal note to the fiscal office that would accompany the bill when it goes for debate. So, I've had just a tiny bit of experience with it, and I had a lot of great guidance from Elaine Menzel from the NACO office and from a young lady named Keisha from the fiscal office in Lincoln. And so, that one was fairly simplistic and cut and dry, and when Becky brought me the other, was there initially five or six?
At least.
Now, I'm up to over 10 requests from the fiscal office for notes. And when I, when I asked, Becky said, in all the years she's been doing this job, there haven't been a lot of requests. So, I wondered why it was so many this year, and I was told that they have new employees there that are enthusiastic and are trying to get more community engagement, and especially from the counties. So, working through them and reaching out for guidance, many of them are gonna be pretty simple to submit, but there's a couple that I felt if I was going to, when you submit a fiscal note, you have to put on the form, who's submitting the form and who you represent. And so, with especially LB 1067 and LB 1375, LB 1414 and 1415, I felt like I needed some input and opinion from the people that sit around this table and from other offices in the county who probably deal with these items more than I do. So, that's why I asked for this to be put on the agenda today.
Would, is it something that, I'm asking this body as a whole, we should make an ad hoc committee to work with you and get other input? I don't know the timing because we're probably on a pretty short timeframe on most of this stuff.
Very, very short timeframe. So, the fiscal office communicated that with all the requests that they sent to Becky, there was a deadline in there, and some of the deadlines were already passed or approaching quickly. So, she said, when I called Keisha at the fiscal office, she said, that's just a guideline, that they only require that the fiscal notes be back to their office 72 hours before the hearing. So, she said, please, go ahead and work on the ones, as long as it hasn't had a hearing, they will accept a fiscal note.
I mean, normally, we've had a hint as to what they were looking for from the counties these, you literally have to, they've sent to LB, you have to read through the whole LB to see what you need, what they want from you.
The thing, when we talk about fiscal notes from the county end versus from the legislative body, I understand if they introduce a bill and it's going to cost some money, they need to have a fiscal note on that end. What scares me on this end is unfortunately, there are several bills, as we all know, introduced this year, that takes money from the county coffers. So, that has a negative fiscal impact, and I would hope that we would concentrate on those bills first that would have some kind of a negative impact, at least on this county commission. If you want to say something.
No, I would agree. I mean, the legislation that's being proposed, it seems like left and right this year, there is, I feel, a conservative attack on county revenue, and we're not the only political subdivision that, that has revenues under extreme scrutiny.
City of North Platte.
Yes.
You listed off a lot of the bill numbers with that nomenclature, and those are sometimes hard to remember. Do you have kind of description of what those bills cover?
I do.
The handful that you listed?
So, 1067 is the inheritance tax, prisoner reimbursement visitor funds.
Clements Bill?
Bill, just to put it in, in short.
And that's been prioritized by Senator Clements?
Yes. 1375 is the county planning commission bill. Judy and I have had conversation about that. Not a lot of negative financial impact on that one, but definitely we feel it would have a negative impact in other ways on.
For sure.
On the county.
For sure.
1414 and 1415. 1414 deals with the cap on property tax and the change to restricted funds. And 1415 provides direct state funding to schools, counties, cities to offset property taxes. And those kind of go along with 1067, which is the inheritance tax. They, they play off of each other. Another one that I feel is important is LB 938 is the County Purchasing Act bill. There's a lot of language in there that affects us directly. 925, not much finance impact that I can determine on that bill, and that is government contracting and addresses doing business with agencies that are firearm entities. And then, of course, the Veterans Bill, that one's already been submitted and had low impact. So, those are, those are the ones that I'm currently working on. LB 1067, the inheritance tax bill, is the one that I feel I really need some help and opinion from people around this table. Anybody can submit a fiscal note to the fiscal office, but if I'm going to do it representing Lincoln County as a whole, I feel like there's, needs to be more than just me working on it. I did invite Becky, Julie Stinger, and Alex Gerchulow. Alex has sent me a lot of information that I feel will help us in submitting that form.
Is there anybody that you would particularly like to see helping you as far as crunching numbers?
Just any, I feel like anybody that sits at this table would be good. If I'm, if I'm gonna put it on there that it's representing Lincoln County, I didn't feel like it should be just one commissioner working on the project.
You're a volunteer? Maybe the chairman will volunteer.
So, this is, this is something that needs to happen fairly quickly because the hearings are all starting to be scheduled.
I'm perfectly fine if you need some assistance.
Very good. And if anybody has supporting documents that you feel like you would like to hand over to us so we can work on that and get it taken care of, that'd be great.
Did you get my?
I did.
Editorial for LB 310?
Yes.
Which was the inheritance tax proposal?
Correct.
In '21.
The inheritance tax is gonna have a big impact on the sheriff's office and on Visit North Platte. Essentially, that's, that's their, their backfill for revenue is, hey, we're gonna allow you guys to use money from your occupation tax, which we already have committed, and money that we get from reimbursement for state prisoners, which we already have committed. So, I would seek input from the sheriff and.
I have already reached out to Commissioner Woodruff, who serves on the Visit North Platte Board, and Lisa for, for input, and I reached out to Jerome already on the prisoner reimbursement program. So, I have emails from both of them already.
Beyond what we're talking about on these bills, I don't really know how to do it because we know that the governor has appointed a committee, we have NACO representation on there with regards to the inheritance tax. But, you know, Commissioner Brunge, you're probably more aware than I am with some of the legislation, but again, correct me if I'm wrong, that, that's looking very dubious for counties at this time. And if you talk to a number of senators, they just won't even really give you the time of day on it because they said, well, it's a foregone conclusion, at least in their minds, that it's, it's already gone. So, that is, that's a huge, huge item. And having seen in the past how hard it is for the county to maintain funds, that's something that really has no impact on the county, I mean, on the state whatsoever.
Right.
Yeah, doesn't impact them, but it impacts counties and everybody that pays taxes in the county. Those funds have to come from somewhere. Now, they, it's easy for the legislature to say, well, we'll make them up partially here and partially there. But when you do something like that, you can take it away just as fast, and the next very session they have, they can cut that in half or a third, just like our jail reimbursement, you know. So, I, I wish there were a way, and perhaps there is, maybe we need a couple of us sit around this table and see if we can draft a strong letter, but I think this is a place to start. I just, I'm just not sure I like what I see coming down the road, so. Very good. So, as I, as I understand it, Chris, help her when she needs some help there. I think we can all do that if it's just Tyler's blessing, one at a time or however we do it, I'm not really sure.
We'll compile and do our additions and subtractions, and then, I suppose, maybe get it to Tammy. That way, she can disseminate it for the board to digest.
Before we submit it to the fiscal office. One of the conversations, when I was trying to learn about the process, is for the fiscal notes, while there's always a motion attached to most of these legislative bills, for the fiscal reports and the fiscal notes, they just want numbers. And that there, while there is an area for us to put some verbiage on there, because sometimes it's hard to equate a number to the actual impact, they also encourage us all, especially with LB 1067, to reach out to our senators, write letters, whether it's, you know, to the local media and newspapers, but also to the governor's office. I think for a lot of people, whenever you talk about eliminating a tax, they, they automatically want to sign on for it. But 1067, eliminating the inheritance tax, without some kind of replacement for the counties.
Not a smoke and mirrors.
Not a smoke and mirrors replacement. A, a very viable replacement, it's gonna have a devastating effect on, on county government and how we function and our finances. So, I feel like of all the bills, there's a lot of very important things going on down there this year, but LB 1067 is one that we really need to spend some time and, and energy on.
I think we'll probably collectively maybe work on drafting some verbiage to that effect, too, maybe working with Tyler or someone. Okay, anything else?
Very good.
That you want to report?
Chris, whenever it works for you, I'm pretty flexible.
Just a note on that 1067, you know, the original editorial I submitted to local papers at the time, you know, they, as you say, they knee-jerk direction, oh, it's cutting a tax. But essentially, if you look at that and the body of what that would do, the windfall is for those who are one and done, a state.
Yeah.
The people left pay that, absorb that because it had, as you say, has to come from somewhere, and all these rural county commissioners are not a bunch of drunken sailors spending money irreverently. And so, essentially, the legacy farm and ranch who has to stick around and pay property tax ongoing, they're the ones who are gonna be impacted by this negatively.
Profound.
The estate that's municipal bonds and CDs and the kids live in California and Idaho, they cash it in and they walk away. That's great for them. But the people left holding the bag, so to speak, are the, are the legacy landowners, the ones we're supposed to be protecting with this. That's highly ironic.
I, I did, I've done a lot of outreach on the topic, and I did have a very good exchange with NACO Director John Cannon. And there is a legislative resolution that does address the having real replacement dollars when, when they do eliminate or if they are successful in the LB 1067, and that's LR 287 CA. And so, he sent some material to all of us. Please take the time and read that. I think it is a viable option. I think it is a viable option and something that we need to be talking to our constituents to support and to our senator.
I'd agree. I don't think that there's one person around this table that is saying that we have to keep the inheritance tax. I think we all agree on principle that the inheritance tax probably should go away, but having a viable option to replace that, that is...
Nobody likes it, Chris, but it's not, it's not the problem.
Right.
Essentially, we just settled a family estate last year, $4 million, and paid $8,200 in inheritance tax with proper planning.
Right.
It's not the end of the day, it's the end of the world. Did I like writing that check? No, I didn't. In a perfect world, I'd love to see that go away as well as a property owner.
Right.
Yes.
But again, it's disingenuous to say, oh, we're gonna yank that away, see what we did.
That's my point.
With no recourse, no recourse for revenue.
You're exactly confirming my point.
And the fear with doing it like that is we would have to probably increase...
Raise taxes.
Property taxes.
Exactly.
Which is already something that we all wanna see go the other direction. So without a real replacement, that is not good legislation, so.
Okay.
And on that note, Judy, if you would like to come up and educate us a little bit on the 1375, that won't have a large fiscal impact, but I'm gonna let Judy speak to that one, because I feel like this is something we all need to be paying attention to.
So this bill is talking about taking the power of holding public hearings away from the Planning Commission. And don't get me wrong, I would love to see less public hearings, but I think the problem with that is it's going to make the general public feel like we are not listening to them. So what they are looking at doing is taking the power of public hearing away. So we'll take a feedlot, for example. A feedlot wants to locate somewhere, we do them under conditional use permits. They would be able to, under this bill, be able to, neighboring property owners would be able to submit a written statement to Planning Commission, but Planning Commission would not hear directly from the people. So they would have to reserve their public comments as far as speaking directly when they come here for a public hearing, which, you know, okay, that's fine, they still get their option of doing that, but it makes it difficult, and I think it's going to give the perception of the public that we don't wanna hear what they're saying, because Planning Commission holds their meetings 5:30 in the evening. That gives anybody that's a working person the ability to attend. You guys hold your meetings at 9 o'clock in the morning on Monday. So anybody that's a property owner that really wants to voice their opinion in front of someone will have to take time off work, make sure they get here, and do that. It doesn't only, and I'm just using Feedlot as one example, it would take away...
That's the driving factor.
That's the driving factor. But it would take away public hearings for wind generation, solar generation, sand and gravel operations. And I can tell you, most of you probably weren't here at the time, but a number of years ago, we had a very, very, very contentious sand and gravel operation, public hearing. And we actually had the Sheriff's Department there attending the summit meeting, because we had to do it twice because it got so out of hand, and he had to escort that gentleman off the premises. So, I mean, those do happen. I think, my personal feeling, being here and watching these happen, that Planning Commission kind of filters so that you guys get the ones that are really passionate and, you know, we might have 15 people speak at a Planning Commission meeting, you guys might have five. You know, so you kind of filter the ones that are, that want to be there and want to be escorted out by the Sheriff's Department, out of there, so that you guys can have a actual public meeting. That's the one thing that it does. I think that, and I sent this to Tyler quite a while ago, I'm not an attorney, so I looked at it, but I think that's in direct conflict with another state statute that says that you have to require public hearings. So I think there's a conflict there. I mean, that's for somebody other than me to figure out, but I do believe that there's conflict by doing that. The other thing they put on there, which I don't have an issue with, is they have a timeline, so you have to hear them, and I think they put 90 days on there, if I remember right. So once you get, and it does say completed application, so once you get a completed application, then there's a 90-day timeline that you have to make a decision within that 90-day timeframe. I don't think that's a bad thing, because that does move it through, you know, because you do have some counties that, well, we're gonna table it, we're gonna table it, we're gonna table it, you know, and that doesn't do anything for anybody. So that's not a bad thing. I don't think overall the bill is really bad, but I do think that public hearing process, I think we really need to take a look at that. And like I said, I would love to just have one public hearing, but I'm not sure we're serving the public by doing that.
Right. I mean, I'm all for, you know, streamlining the process and creating efficiencies, but this smacks of inhibiting public engagement in the process, and that's wrong.
And how the process is set up to work is that the Planning Commission makes recommendations to the Board of Commissioners, so why wouldn't we want them to hear and receive all that public testimony? And is there any real cost savings by eliminating the public hearing?
Well, I don't know, because that was my other question that I had with that. So right now, when I publish public hearings, I will publish one, and it will have both the Planning Commission and the county commissioners on there. So I only get that one fee. We are required to notify, excuse me, neighboring property owners within 300 feet of the property by certified mail, so there's a cost there. So less than $100 to do that. Now, I don't know, this probably wouldn't eliminate any of that, because you're still gonna have to publish that public hearing for the commissioner level. You're still gonna have to notify those individuals for the commissioner level. And my question is, how is the public going to know that they have a right to have written comments if you don't publicize something that says, submit your written comments before whatever date?
So this reared its head for everybody's essay last year at our Planning and Zoning Conference, and there was discussion beforehand as far as legislation, but there were special interests that were guiding this conversation...
Yes.
...that have had, in some counties, they've received adverse welcome for confined feeding operations, and they had some rocky public hearings. And this is their attempt, in my opinion, special interest driving this, to be able to get around that and streamline their ability to get approval for confined feeding operations in communities that may not welcome them. I think in Lincoln County, and it was at that conference, Lincoln County was, I mean, put up on a pedestal, because we do things right, and we are often looked at as an example for our planning and zoning processes, which is great credit to Judy and the work that you do. But we can still have that, and we can still be an ag-friendly county and welcome these operations through the processes that are in existence. So again, to my comment earlier, this just speaks, it's troubling trying to limit the public from being able to engage in the process. That may have concerns.
Yeah, I just feel like you're gonna have people that are more angry because they're getting that option taken away.
They're not being hurt.
Not being hurt.
Yeah. I mean, if I were a landowner and said, okay, I can write written comments, or I can show up here, now I have to take off work, I'm gonna be instantly angered because, number one, I have to take off work, and I have to hope that I have a employer that allows me to do that, so I can defend my property. Because, I mean, I firmly believe that everybody has a right to get up and defend their property.
You know, I appreciate it. I have to move on here a little bit.
It's fine.
No, that's fine, Judy, please. We're talking about not taking the voice away from the people, but that's just what I'm doing, taking the voice away.
No, that's okay.
But what I wanted to say is, and I agree with Commissioner Burns, the bill, or maybe it was yourself, isn't all that bad, there are provisions in the bill that are terrible. I think that if we could maybe even draft something that we could give to our senator or some other senators that say, you know, we're not so much opposed to that, but certainly on these things, we are opposed. Judy, appreciate it. Anything else?
Nope.
Judy, if you're willing to get with me, if it works out when Chris and I get together and we can work on that fiscal note, too.
No problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We did receive one other communication on the epic tax, and I have not received, Becky, have you gotten a request for a fiscal note on that yet?
You did not, because it's a ballot initiative that's being pushed.
Right. And with that said, they are still wanting us to send communications on how it would affect our area, whether it's for the positive or the negative, even though it is a ballot initiative. They are really requesting a lot of communication from the local counties to Lincoln.
I think that's important, so we'll make that a part of it. Okay. Thank you. Trying to get back on schedule here a little bit. 10:15, purchase a, discuss, consider purchase some more for Lincoln County Department Road. Gentlemen.
Noel, Jason, Schultz, Lincoln County Highway Superintendent.
Good morning.
Assistant Superintendent.
Is this your driver? Who's this? Hey, Brian, how are you?
Good. How are you doing?
So we're here to, according to our plan and our budget, to purchase a mower for one of our tractors. So we did solicit prices. We have three prices you guys should have in front of you there, based on the specs that we distributed. And looking at the prices and what we have, I guess we would recommend for the purchase of the Land Pride mower from North Platte Kubota in the amount of $25,007.44. We did receive pricing from North Platte Kubota, Titan Machinery, and also from Miller Repair for different models of mowers.
Jason, these all have the same characteristic bat wing design?
Yep, they're the single right bat wing.
Gearbox. Heavy-duty gearboxes.
Yep.
All similar in construction integrity and warranty.
Yep.
I think the Land Pride actually had a little more gearbox.
It might have had a little higher gearbox.
The Land Pride, which is your lowest one.
Yeah.
Actually, you think has the best warranty.
Yep.
Jason, which shop will this be out of?
Well, that kind of changed depending on...
Depending on how the motion comes.
So initially, this was to fill the need of the tractor we just purchased for the Hershey area.
For the Hershey area.
But actually, in our discussions, Brian brought up the point of the mower that we currently have in the North Platte area is maybe just a little bit too heavy, pushing the limits of that tractor that it's on. It's a smaller tractor. So this mower is actually just a little bit lighter as far as overall weight, so I think it's actually gonna go to the North Platte area, and then the heavier mower is gonna go over to the Hershey area for that bigger tractor.
Wouldn't you just wanna get a heavier mower for District 1?
You mean the heavier tractor?
Tractor.
Yeah, yeah.
We knew what I meant. It was going, no.
You answered on, you answered my next question, was, will the tractor be able to operate the mower? So if you move, if you move it to the Hershey District and swap...
Yep.
That'll work out good for us then.
Is this mower the same width as the ones that you already...
Yep.
Your grease points are all similar, or location points?
Yeah, and I think the...
All your moving points, your pins and bushing?
Yeah, everything's pretty much, I won't say identical, but very, very similar between all the models that we actually had bid, so.
It's nice that we have three companies show up to give us bids. It makes it very competitive.
Okay.
Pretty competitive, too, actually.
Yeah.
Very competitive.
We've heard your recommendation, any action this board chooses to take.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we accept the bid from Land Pride for bat wing mower in the amount of $25,007.44.
Second. A motion in second, further discussion?
There may be note for the record, it is, in fact, the lowest price of the three bids in similar value, what appears to be.
Very good. Thank you. Tammy, pull a call, please.
Boulard?
Hi.
Woodruff?
Hi.
Burns?
Hi.
Weems?
Hi.
Gubly?
Hi.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you all.
[inaudible]
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 You guys locked the door when you left?
[laughing]
[inaudible]
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 Sure.
Yep.
I did, I read it wrong.
Okay, now the fun part. You recognize some people for some years of service, so if I may, I'm gonna step out here. Mr. Gray, a gay, is there a Mr. Gay in the room? A Mr. Jewel Gay. Read this, it says 10 years of service, Lincoln County, Nebraska. We sincerely appreciate your hard work and efforts year after year. Thank you for your many years of service. Jewel, on behalf of not just myself, but the entire board and everybody in the courthouse, actually, in the buildings, thank you for your work. I mean, we hear nothing but good things about you, not just your work, but always having a little smile and a nice attitude. Jewel, thank you very much. Thank you. The next person, I'm not sure that's right, it says 35 years. Sheriff Cruz, I'm back. Again, it's gracious. Started in junior high. The nice, in fact, you've worn a number of different, can't tell you enough how much we appreciate your years of service. I'm gonna read this, it says 35 years of service, Lincoln County, Nebraska, Cheryl Ball. We appreciate your hard work and efforts year after year. Thank you for your many years of service and 35 years, thank you, on behalf of all of Lincoln County. Sheriff, thank you for having good employees. And as a matter of fact, our few guys come in, the rest of the Sheriff's Department around here in this picture, not just about me, the rest of the board also, if you want, I don't care, that's fine, but it's just, you're the one person.
We'll let the sheriff deputies take it.
We'll let the sheriffs take it.
Thank you. Somebody got that, right? We hear the shot? All right. Thank you, guys.
Service certificate, Joe.
Thank you.
Service certificate, Joe.
Yeah, give her the certificate.
[laughing]
[inaudible]
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 We do have a new reporter from PanOPTV in the chambers with...
We do have a new reporter from Pan O P TV in the chambers with us today. Would you like to introduce yourself?
Yeah, my name is Ashanti Allen, and I am from Omaha, Nebraska. And I come from K T V. You guys know K T V, it's Watch Seven. I was there. I started off as their camera operator. And then I finished off as their editor-producer. And I wanted to do more reporting and anchoring. And so I was looking for a job. And some of the jobs were, like, far away. And so I've never, like, really left Omaha before. And so I saw somewhere in North Platte, never heard of it before. But I did a little bit of research and applied and got the job. And so I'm really excited to be here. People that I've met so far have been pretty nice to me. So I'm excited to see what North Platte brings for me. Thank you.
With your indulgence, then we're going to do this right. So I have to joke here by my turn. And if you have a mic, I'll get an interview there by 10:00. Do you want to think about that a minute? No. Chris knows what's going on. Want you to get that coming when you move on the side of the camera, of course.
Can I shake around for that?
We're interviewing you. You're not interviewing me. This is a-
Oh, he's flipping, he's flipping the table.
This is a first.
I like it.
Lightoon is our newest reporter covering the Commissioners' meeting. It's Asasi. Asasi, I'll talk about the Florida type on the inside. And anything you'd like to say about your first meeting this morning?
It was very nice, very nice and informational, you know? It was nice. Everybody included in the meeting, you know, people coming up and-
Sure. And you came from Omaha, right?
Yes.
So, and how many times did you get interviewed out there at Omaha this year?
How many times did I get interviewed?
Look, what you got before you hit this group, right?
Yes.
We have fun. Hey, thank you for coming. Now, if you want to ask a couple of questions with me, please do.
How long have you been with North Platte?
Oh, my goodness gracious. Dirt was still new. We had three trees in the county at that time, very little brass. Been here since 19- Where's the Earl? A long time. Been on this work for 38 years. So, yeah. Around, almost as long as our last gal, 35 years with the Sheriff's Department.
Okay. You have any children? Ten children?
I have all, I have three children, two daughters and a son. Watched one of my grandsons wrestle in North Platte Saturday with the after center. My granddaughter wrestled. So, yeah, just a long time around here.
Going to, I believe he has.
I thought I'm going to go. So I can let you know from that goal.
I used to, I lived at the University of Nebraska, project-
I had a conversation Friday. Tyson Larson.
And a gentleman by the name of Arnie Chambers.
You know Tyson.
Was the director, wonderful lady. It was a lot of-
Him and Mary, Ken Schilling, Ken Schills. They've been hired by R W B. And so-
So that's what the meeting today is.
Yes. You should know he's a professional architect.
Okay.
So I've had my conversation.
Okay.
I'm going to pass on continued involvement.
Well, I might go just-
She knows we're not too serious, doesn't she?
This is-
We'll see if she comes back or not.
Mary, Senator Jacobson, Jacobson's daughter.
Oh, okay.
You bet.
So you guys, Ashanti, you can take that back and use all your editing skills on it.
That's right.
And I'll be watching. I want to see how good it looks. So take out all of those beeps and stuff, just, we might get about a three-second shot out of four, but that's okay. You have a good smile. We'll look at that.
Oh, thank you.
Welcome to North Platte again.
Trying to throw a document.
So Joel's years of service was 10 years, right?
Yes.
And Cheryl's was 35. And that she's witnessed a lot of changes at the Sheriff's Office in 35 years?
She wasn't here under Yolster, but she's seen four sheriffs. Oh, it's sad. That Liberty Tree thing sounds like kind of an ordeal, doesn't it? So, Chris, when we hit our 100-year celebration, we got the shirts. Are we thinking about getting our uniforms, like, just like they have? Should we match with them or?
I'm not participating in that.
The C and Molly and the D A are very active, aren't they?
The D A is very, very-
It's for me.
I used to sign, I used to sign my-
The Boston Commons that he was talking about? Pardon me? The Boston Commons area that he was talking about?
It's a pretty neat area, but isn't it?
I don't, I've never been to Boston.
You keep looking, son.
Only one. That looked like our last one.
Welcome to North Platte.
Apologies. Apologies for the chairman. You're going to have to be doing that a lot probably this year, so.
You've been baptized now, so it'll be normal moving forward, whatever normal is in this room.
Right, okay.
Any further business, Becky? Anyone? No concerns from elected officials or officials? Hearing none, we will recess at, I mean, we'll adjourn at 10:52.